Item number two, is there any declaration of any conflict of interests in any of the items on the agenda? Hearing none. Item number three is the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions on the agenda? Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add an agenda item in regards to TIR road issues, I guess is the best way to put it.
You want that under, well, under new business 5.7?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Is there anything else anybody wishes to add? If not, I would request if we, if time does a lot, I would like to have, I'll call it 5.8 if you so allow me. I might have a discussion pertaining to, and I've been trying to think about the proper terminology, would be pertaining to business meetings. And I'll give you some information, it's, or some idea thoughts, if that's all right. So I'll just call it business meetings. That's if time allot. It's not an important item at this time, but, thank you. Is there anything further? Hearing none, we can move on. Item number four was business arising from minutes. There wasn't anything on that. We'll move right into item number five, under new business, Director's Report, Director of Public Works, Derek Sutherland. If you'll come down to the, please. Good wet rainy morning.
Springs, just spring-like.
Yes, it's, one good thing about rain, you don't shovel it unless, yet.
It's chair, I'm in here, but, it's the wrong one.
On the way up this morning, I just want to interject here, on the way up this morning, listening to CBC Radio, and last November, there was a couple of twins born, but they were genetically modified. So things do change. We may be shoveling rain before we know it, but I'm just saying, eh? Things do happen, so genetically modified babies, they were born in China, I believe. Carry on, Derek. For yours.
I don't know if I can follow up to that, but, good morning, council and staff. Happy New Year. Welcome back, I guess, to another, another season. First, I'll start off on some capital projects that have been ongoing, and just kind of update you where we're at with those and what, how close we are to finishing what ones have. Arcadia sidewalk upgrades have been completed with the exception of paving the driveway aprons on the outside, which due to the weather, we've, we're going to look at main, the contractor's going to look at gravelling them and maintaining them until spring where they can pave the outside of. Again, it's just the outside aprons that lead up over the sidewalks. Again, the weather, we've never had a weather bother us to that degree, I guess, on any project for a while. Just, it was either cold or rain, or, you know, so, we did manage to get the road service back to proper thickness and the sidewalk itself, and we did get sawed and stuff laid, so, they have an obligation to maintain that through the winter, and we'll go back and for the deficiencies first, first thing in the spring. Other than that, the project itself went, went well. We never had any huge issues. Typical traffic delays as usual. It's just surprising what areas have that much traffic when you start backing it up and stopping it for a while. It's, it's a busy spot out through there, for sure. The Business Park deforesting project, the sections that we had under consideration for development has been completed. We've done some preliminary test holes for the soils and existing conditions. Now, our staff's going to meet to discuss our next steps in there, to, now that we've exposed some of the, some of the conditions that's in there, and we'll bring that forward at a later date. Web.com HVAC upgrades, that's nearing completion. We have a site visit and a meeting inspections on January 14th, at which time we'll finalize with the contractors and the subcontractors what their completion and startup times will be. But it looks like, right now, everything should be completed and up and running by January 20, weekend ending the 25th of January. The project there went well, is good with the contractors and the tenants. Ninety percent of the work was done alongside the daily operations, and both parties seemed to work well to make sure that there was, disruptions was minimal. You know, I had good feedback from the tenant and from the, from the contractor, subcontractors, that, you know, everything went well, so, I think that's what sped the process up, so. The, within our department, winter conditions, as we all know, they kind of set in early on our projects and stuff, so winter prep's been the main priority for the rest of the staff, on equipment and repairs. Plowing and salting's been minimal, because as I said, with the trace of snowfall and the freeze thaw cycles. Minimal frost we've had in the ground, and rain has been, any bit of snow we've had has been a rain event right behind it, so, that creates kind of a fine line between, you know, what conditions we can maintain, or what things will end up damaged, doing more damage to than, than the good. But our sidewalks, as I mentioned, the weather's been minimal. We have had a chance to run the new WL-32 multipurpose loader that we have, and that's been excellent as far as travel and sand salt capabilities. It's allowed us to look at logistically, because we can travel with that machine, I'll say with, from here to the outlying ones, Arcadia, Main Shore Grove, Hebron, and Brooklyn, we're going to, I'm going to look at testing of better options for getting to the outlying areas. So presently, I've placed and prepped a machine in Port Maitland at the sewage treatment plant. So with that, with limited available manpower at times, this test during snow events can allow an operator to travel without loading and trailering delays. So in other words, if I have one person's kind of doing the rotation in here, or has the, has the trailer and doing something else, with that machine out there, we could just send a person out there in a vehicle, go do the sidewalks through there, and then return it there. So we have it plugged in and battery tender and stuff on it out there, so, well, you know, we'll, we'll test that, see if that helps logistically in time. If it does, I'm also looking to review existing equipment to see if we can possibly do a similar setup for the Carlton section. Same thing, if this works out there, then put a machine out there, and then kind of Mick, have this one running here, and then if I have somebody that can go there, and then travel out there, and so. Again, it would take, it's going to take a good snow event to get to test it out, because right now, we're just kind of chasing, you know, behind the rainstorms. Myself, ongoing capital work's been on, been the tops. Beginning work on possible future capital projects has started. Our asset management cohort program and team, we've been busy, and will be busy in the coming months. Also, prepping for budget will begin shortly. The planning and details, the compile information within my department tends to take a bit longer, because you're looking for a lot of information from people out there, and try to, by the time we get that information back, so, before we know it, budget'd be right around the corner, so. Those are just kind of some of the highlights. So again, I'll open the floor, if there's any questions from anybody, feel free.
Take it right off, maybe Lauren.
I have the technology. Derek, do you assign one person per each machine, or in case if it's important meeting in one, and Carlton, that one person runs both machines?
I guess, depending on, on how severe the weather is. Most of the time, we only have one person that, that-
That operates that particular machine.
Operates for sidewalks, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He is also, will run the, runs the plow truck for us too, because he's licensed for that. So, logistically, we'd start, if there was a need to do road plowing, he'd attempt, he'd go do that first, get that done, get back, and then would start on the sidewalks. Now, as I mentioned, because in that case, if he could start out on the multipurpose loader and travel, that would free up the truck and the trailer, and/or with a machine, logistically, I could just send a person in a vehicle, another person just to go do one or two sidewalks, right?
My reason for asking that, because I know a lot of, a lot of companies will assign, like, this person to that machine, and you're responsible for greasing it and maintaining it, and make sure it work, that person gets used to that machine, right?
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're doing with, with Morgan. He's new, but he's been out a few times and traveling, and I also have John Muse, that he's usually busy in the park with the web.com at full time when it's snowing, right? But he's very good with maintaining the equipment and stuff like that, he's been here, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Allen, go ahead.
Happy New Year to you too, Derek. Arcadia looks great. It finished great, took too long.
Yeah.
I know weather, I understand completely, I, just, quick question. Any idea when they're going to backfill those driveways?
I was told at the end of last week, it would be done this week. I know that the foreman for the, for the contractor is away this week on vacation, but he told me that they would, the company would be there to do them. Now, I'm assuming, because of the cold weather, they probably waiting for it to thaw, so they can compact it in. So now that that's out, I would assume that they would be, today would be a good day to do it.
I just, I go by every day, and I know a few of them driveways are-
Yeah, they had started prepping some on the far end, and on up this end, I think there's something they never did get to.
There's no way, like, the way they're sitting, the way they're, the way they're constructed now, we can't, can't tear up any of that asphalt that they laid down for the sidewalk.
They're driving on them? No, wouldn't bother, because what, they're going to come in and they want to compact that gravel in tight?
I mean, until, until that's done, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, only thing would be, would be a resident that had a, somebody plowing for them, or a contractor might, but if they get that gravel packed in, they're good, and-
They should be good.
You know, but again, we're to the mercy of Mother Nature, because you get that freeze thaw cycle, and a lot of times with no frost in the ground, and somebody tries to plow, and it ends up tearing it up. But the contractor's well aware of it, and it's their responsibility to maintain that through the winter.
So they should be seeing, the resident should be seeing somebody there.
Yeah, they've agreed to ma, to inspect it and maintain it through the, till spring, right?
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Was there any further questions? Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
Sorry, I had, I had to ask this question. Everything working well at the PM Sewage Treatment Plant?
Uh, yes, yep. The typical maintenance, things like that, you know, as, you know, again, days like this, it's the freeze thaw cycle, you get a lot of runoff, right? So it increases flows and things like that, but, you know.
No alarm bells?
No, nothing.
Thank you.
Deputy Warden?
Counselor Durkey just perked my interest when she said something about the PM Sewage Treatment Plant. Is there any, of course, we all know that budget time is coming up here, in the very near future, March, April's going to come up really quick. Is there any major maintenance items that you see forthcoming that the municipality and district mayor is going to need to do, like pumps that are possibly worn out, motors, upgrades? I see, see you guys often out, I've seen you out near the Arcadia School here a couple times, working on, I think it was a pumping station out there.
Yes, yeah. We just, we just installed a new pump there in the last, beginning of this year, in, out there, and the, I would say, in regards to Port Maitland, no, we did an upgrade there in '07, which we did some piping changes and aeration. Basically, routine maintenance, we've got, actually, just got a call today for, the company's coming to do the service on the blowers, which will be, we may have to do bearing changes, typical maintenance things. The only thing in Port Maitland, the building itself, is structurally, it, because of the salt air out there, any roof vents, siding and stuff like that, it needs to, needs to be painted. It had came, it has a hardy board siding on it, which in the day was pretty popular, and what happens though is, when it gets, water gets behind it, it comes through that hardy board siding, but it can't come out the front because it's sealed, and so it wants to peel. But there is a way to paint those, we've got information that we can, so. There's some shingle work, some typical building maintenance things that's coming up, but as far as operational, major investments, the air exchange system within the building itself, it was a fairly large air exchange system, similar to you'd have in a home. Because of the, the vent sucking in the salt water, it eats the inside of the ventilation system, so we're looking at some type of, some type of change there. And the only other thing was the compressor that we have there. The compressor is a large compressor. It's really bigger than what we need, so my thought was, in when we move forward with public works facility, I was going to remove that compressor from there, utilize it as a working compressor for tools and things like that, and find a smaller compressor for there, right?
But there's nothing in the immediate future that you see that's going to be needing major overhauls, or?
No.
It's just general maintenance?
Just general maintenance, typical, you know, you have your odd pump, when you just, when you last, then you don't think a pump's going to fail, is when it will, right?
Absolutely.
But nothing we have, you know, we just did LS-1 last year with that. We will be looking at some controls work within LS-1 to, to bring that information with the new flow meter and stuff together in a computer, in a computer format, we'll say, that we can download it each weekend, instead of manually doing the numbers.
Yep, all right, thank you. CIO, go ahead.
I guess I would have preferred to field that question, so, at the department level, we actually haven't had a discussion about capital projects for next year, so, there's been really nothing between myself, the Director of Finance, and the directors about what should be coming forward to councils for discussion. So it could be that, given the answer Derek gave you, there could be changes down the road when we start presenting things to council.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
You're doing such a good job, I don't have any questions, I'll just make one up. Any, any reports on the new maintenance building?
I know, we're working with Stafford at the moment, in regards to the last, the direction we're given to see about the additionals work to be done to the rec building and stuff, so, I think we have a meeting in tomorrow, or later this week.
Yeah, Ryan Graves is doing great, I seen him last night.
Okay, Derek, if, for me, I have two or three questions. First off, we'll start with the Business Park. You said about the deforestation and so on, that's been completed and so on, and I was out, there was no major issues or anything with the contractor? Like, he was able to do everything that was necessary, and so on?
Yes, yeah, that went well. He finished, you know, he was actually a little bit ahead of his, in his time allotment for doing it. But, no, everything went well there as far as giving us an idea what we got there.
A few times, and seen in the scene with, the way the chipping was done, it seemed to be, I'll say, a clean process for that style of operation, so I was pleased that way. I did hear you mention, was you going to be doing some, or maybe I'll direct it to the CIO, or to you, are we moving forward with the project of having, to find out whether, what type of soil condition is down, rock, slate, whatever it is out there, or, who wants to take it?
You can fill in my gaps, Derek.
Okay, for sure.
So definitely at the staff level, we've talked about what, what is the testing process that we need in order to identify what kinds of development that land is useful for. So as Derek shared, we've done a few holes, but now it's a matter of where do we go from there, so that we can identify any barriers.
What I did is, we did ten, we did ten test holes in the proximity of where our intended road area would be. So we just did, what, we dug them to determine topsoil levels, what our gravel soil condition is, if we hit water, or if we hit ledge, right? So we, we did ten holes to determine preliminary information like that.
Those ten holes were just with the backhoe or whatever?
With an es, with the excavator, yeah.
And they were only in the area where we intend to develop the road and lay civics? We haven't actually looked at the area where we cleared, we haven't done any testing there, just so we're, just so we're clear.
I guess, the preliminary holes in that area would be for your road infrastructure, which would also include your sewer and water, which would be your main, you'd need to kind of know-
For us to do, yeah.
You kind of need to know what your challenges are there, before you, because that would dictate your development, to a certain degree.
Yes, it would. My next question on the Business Park is the turn going up to those two or three businesses that are there, Webcom included, and so on, and we had had some discussion, the turning radius now is, I'm going to say, what, must be 100 feet wide? And we were talking about putting in a guardrail, but that road is maintained by TIR, and they're in no rush at this time to do anything. Is it becoming a problem? Because it is quite a wide, the stop signs here, but people are going on the left-hand side of the stop sign, like, it's wide.
Yeah, that's, that's obvious there, and again, it is a TIR right away. We've met with TIR and discussed options there, as we mentioned in the past. Again, as far as traffic and safety-wise, again, you know, I'm sure there's people that probably don't like, you know, what happens there.
Well, because it's a TIR road and so on, and it's not for us, I won't say for us to maintain, my, my biggest concern, I haven't heard of any accidents out there, I'm not saying there hasn't been a car bumped or whatever. I guess in today's society, businesses, municipal units and government especially, had better do whatever it can to prelude a, a serious accident. I wouldn't want to hear someday that somebody driving in, somebody coming out, and they've had a bad accident there. Now, I realize it's not our, I'll say, our responsibility, but I'm just wondering, like, how far can we push? Could, I, I don't want to hear about an accident, somebody hurt, that's all.
It's, it's a little bit difficult for us at this point to think about a guardrail, because now we've got activity happening in the extension, we're in there working, so it's, it's a little bit challenging there. One thing, though, in terms of mitigating risk, is it's clearly documented that this council has worked with the tenants in the park and the province on making sure those roadways are safe, and that signage and traffic controls meet safety guidelines.
Yeah, okay. My next, carrying on in the Business Park, pertaining to Webcom, I want to thank, well, I want to thank the CIO, and the upper staff, and yourself, for working with Webcom in this past year to facilitate the completion of that heat back. My, my hope is that it works very well, because we are finishing off the winter, coming into summer, I know they had more issues with being too warm in there, and having the air conditioning current. And I guess I'll direct this to the CIO, I would like to see a letter go from this municipal unit, thanking Karen for cooperation. I think it's only fair, because Webcom did make some compromises on setting up their new workstations and so on, and working with the contractor, I believe, to facilitate the installation of this mega project.
Yeah, yes, that, again, as I mentioned, the contractor and tenant relationship, I think, went quite well there, to allow the contractors to, you know, work within normal business hours, without having a lot of weekend delays and work, and, which intent in turn sped up the project and allowed us to get to this point a lot faster, I think.
Yes. I'm sorry, councilors, but I do have a couple more. The Rockville walking trail, slash sidewalk, and so on. I know where it is, the style of trail that it is, and so on, and I noticed, you know, that there is still a lot of water inflowing from, in back, across some of the properties and so on. Maintenance of that style of trail is a little more, I, I don't know what the word would be, Derek, but is a little more difficult, I guess, than a asphalt or a concrete sidewalk, and so on. My biggest concern is that it is, it's used after a heavy rainstorm and so on, and not likely there's any washout, but I would hope that you would do a, somebody takes a drive by just to make sure, because there is people that use it on a regular basis, and so on.
I can update you on that. Again, I don't want to blame Mother Nature, but I'm going to have to again on this one, because the same contractor in Arcadia was the same one down there. We had intentions of moving equipment from Arcadia, the roller, and with air grader, and back grading and filling and rolling. And, again, the delays in Arcadia ended up, we got into the freeze thaw cycle, so, our intent is, again, first thing, when the weather breaks in the spring, is to go there, our intent is to dress it up, we're going to contractors coming back to roll, and we're going to, we're going to grade, over top it, and then roll it back down and level it back up, but, yeah.
And I know, as Deputy Warden mentioned, any capital, major capital repairs to any of our infrastructure and so on. My one last concern, because my fellow councilors don't always see it, I see it more than they do, I sign off on a lot of checks to different companies that have done maintenance. We've had, this building's 10 years old, and we've had to replace a few incidentals and so on. Is it time that this building has a, I won't say a major overhaul, but a major inspection to know what's going to happen in the next five years, or?
That is on my, on my radar. There is some changes, I'm going to be bringing forward budgetary-wise, to deal with, you know, some areas that we just can't, you know, to do with heating and cooling, and, you know, bugs and things like that, changes that we're making, you know, as we grow, and things grow in turn, inside the building, and changes, so, yeah, there will be some things brought forward there, plus there is the ongoing future maintenance.
Okay. Okay. I guess it just determined, Derek, that that's all from me, unless any of the other councilors have another question on their mind? So on, on that note, then, I guess, thank you very much for your report, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I'll get these glasses. 5.2, Port Maitland Fog Alarm Building, per surplus property discussion, and the floor is open on that. Counselor Durkey, go ahead.
So there was a suggestion that the Port Maitland Fog Alarm Building be put up as surplus, and I've done some research, and spoken to a number of people in the community, and essentially, there was a lighthouse originally on the end of the wharf that was built in 1881, and that became, when that became disrepair, the Fog Alarm Building was built. There are a lot of suggestions of, of possible uses for that building locally. We have a local fisherman who does the living wharves demonstration on the wharves, he would like to possibly use that building for demonstrations, or even outside the building, or if it's raining inside the building. It's the only public access to the beach. There is a community group that would be interested in, in developing that building to make it a little museum for the Port Maitland area, in terms of the fishing. There's a lot of history there. The, there are organizations across Nova Scotia who are taking these small, even though they're small lighthouses, like Cape St. Mary and Walton, and, and fixing them up as tourist attractions quite successfully. And so, in, instead of declaring this surplus and us selling it off, I have some suggestions that, things that maybe we should develop it, as opposed to get rid of it. I know that there's a concern about the cost, because there is lead paint on it and asbestos, and I think that's something maybe we should have a look at what the cost would be to, to bring that up to date. So my thoughts are, we could keep it and develop it ourselves, considering that the province is looking at trying to increase and improve the number of tourist experiences in the province. We could possibly keep it and lease it to a community group, who could then take it over and fix it up, and that would mean that we would, if that, something happened to that society, were it to, to fold, then we, it would come back to us, and we would still own it. I think we should make this a little lighthouse to visit, we could enhance the tourism experiences in, in the area. I know it's not cape for shoe in terms of the size and style, but we have beaches, shanties, wharves, which is still not a, like, has been made into a commercial area, so it's still authentic, which people like to see. The Nova Scotia Preservation Society has done a lot of work in trying to save the lighthouses, as opposed to get rid of them, and my understanding from speaking to the community members, that it is very important to the community, and they would like to keep it owned publicly or nonprofit organization. I think that if, if natural resources starts to do something with the park, to improve the facilities there, this just would add a- the facilities there, this just would add a little feature for people to visit. It does have a great history in the area, and I would highly recommend that we do not declare it surplus at this time and look at alternatives to developing it.
Is there any comments from the rest of the council pertaining to this property? Go ahead, Councillor Allen.
I wasn't here when this first come up, so this is, this is new to me. Any of these groups you're talking about would, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, would they be willing to buy it and preserve it, or are they just groups that will come in once we've done the work? I don't know, I'm not, probably not phrasing, probably not going about this right, but I'm just wondering, like, you know, are there groups that are willing to come in that would be willing to, you know, I suppose we can't pick and choose who we would sell it to, it would have to go out to some kind of tender, right?
Yeah, all right. I don't know who's gonna come on. Go ahead.
Thank you. So there are a couple of situations. We know that if we go through the process of fixing it up, then it's gonna cost a fair bit of money, because we have to go through getting an engineer, going through the tendering process, et cetera, et cetera. If a private company, organization, nonprofit, they may not have to go through the same thing. So there's a couple of things. One is, we decide to do it ourselves, or two, if we sell it to a nonprofit organization, then they would have to take the responsibility to remediate it themselves. What that might mean is that they could apply to different levels of government for grants to, to get money to do that. So there's a few different ways of looking at it. The alternative, Councillor Allen, that you missed is that the thought was to put it up and sell it to a private individual, and that's what we're, we're trying, the group in the, in the community would prefer that not to happen.
Okay. Councillor Cushing?
Just to expand on the, on the little lighthouse, of course, I grew up on the, on the shores of, of the, in that area, from, you know, right from Pembroke up to Cape St. Mary's. And we're talking about a tourist attraction, which would be a perfect idea. A lot of people, I'm just wondering how many people actually know that they always claim that Port Maitland was built, or was settled because of the night fishing that was done, and a lot of people probably don't understand what night fishing really was, but it was actually going out at nighttime and jigging and handlining for codfish, and they said that's the, one of the main reasons why Port Maitland was, was settled. And just because it's approximately to the Trinity Ledge, there's a lot of history up there, and I think your, your, the history part of it in the, in the little lighthouse would be, would be quite an attraction because of its uniqueness of their fishing industry that they had there that really built that community, right? And, and I'm sure there's some fishermen up in that area that would have some good stories to tell, and I would think if you could grab a hold of Snow, George, he would have a, because he's a, he was there for a long time, that's what he did, right? And he certainly have a lot of, lot of knowledge about it, so it'd be certainly a tourist attraction, put it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So just point of clarification for everybody, because there's a lot being discussed. So Councillor Allen asked me, and I confirmed, that should this council, should this council deem that property surplus, there's a prescribed method for putting it to market. So Councillor Durkey indicated that their thought was there, it could be sold to a private person, so yes, that could happen, but it would have to happen through the proper process. There would be no circumventing that process, and that's only if council deems it surplus.
Go ahead, Councillor Allen.
So I guess to clarify is if, like what Councillor Durkey's saying about selling it to a nonprofit, there's no guarantee that if we decided to sell it, it would go to a nonprofit. It could go, once you put it out there for sale, we have to go through a process, so it would be anybody's choice to buy it. So we either hang on to it, do it ourselves, or we, like, we can't pick and choose, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, we can't pick and choose who's going to get it and what they're going to do with it once we decide to put it for sale.
Well, through a request for proposal or expression of interest process, the documents for submitting in a process like that lay out council's vision, they lay out the method that you're gonna use to score proposals, and so through that scoring, you would be ranking submissions, and through that ranking, you would be basically indicating your vision for how you'd like to see the property used by a prospective group or person.
Okay. No, thank you, that clarifies, thank you.
When council originally acquired this, this property, it was, as Councillor Durkey stated, was to access the beach from that side of, I'll say, the wharf or that area, and I don't know if anybody has used that as an access point or not, and so on, they have. Councillor Durkey does bring up a good point, you know, as we get rid of any historical building, and it's gone, that's one thing. The people or anybody that buys it, I don't know, it's not a large enough piece of property to put on a septic system, I don't believe you would drill a, it's too close to the, I don't know, you know, so I don't know if anybody that would purchase it privately would probably only use it for, to go and sit and say, this is my piece of property, I'm not looking at the ocean, have my friends over, in that respect, but as a tourist attraction, it may have value. But my, my biggest concern is a private or a community organization that takes it on. Soon as, if I acquire it as an organization, there is responsibility for insurance and liability, is that not? So how do I, on that small piece of property, I'll say, make money to cover that? Is there gonna be enough money, do I sell pictures from there in order to make it? But once I open a facility, now I'm saying now I'm a private organization, and I open that to sell paintings and glassware or whatever, do I have to have a toilet facility in there? Can anybody answer me that? See, those are the things, and if they say you have to have a toilet facility, because now you're a public entity, what happens there? It's not large enough for that. So my question, I'm thinking was to add, Derek, can it be hooked into the Port Maitland treatment system?
Yeah, it's beyond the system.
That's what I'm saying, okay. Bottled water is all you need for, if you have to have water and so on. I don't know if this is something that we as a municipality wish to look into. I don't want to strap an organization, a community organization, then everything ends up by falling back on to the municipality at the end of the year. If we own it and a community organization, excuse me, we carry liability insurance out at the Cape Frisbee Lighthouse, do we not?
Based on how it's being used today?
Yes, and it would be the same with that facility? If it was a community?
Yes, but the premium for that facility is based on how it's being used, which it's not. So I guess if I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, Councillor Durkey gave a very good list of possibilities around the building, and there's no pressure to do anything different. The lawn is being mowed, the building looks fairly good, it probably could use a lick of paint, but I mean, it's not an eyesore for sure. So, I mean, you can stay the course you've been on, too, there's no pressure to make a decision of any sort. There was an inquiry that the warden fielded about interest in the property. I brought it to council to find out if you're even interested in doing anything different. That's it.
So, oh, I'm sorry. Deputy Warden, go ahead.
And that was gonna be my point in regards to, I don't believe we have to make a decision on this at our next council, we can, but one thing that, after listening to Councillor Durkey, and there is some community interest in, in that property and area, maybe we should put out an expression of interest to see what, what ideas could come forward, whether it be a forming of a community group or something like that, because the property's really sitting there deteriorating and not doing very much, if anything, and maybe there is a community group or someone out there that would like to put forward. So it wouldn't hurt to at least put out an expression of interest for the, for the property. I don't think that, that we should be deeming that surplus property until we've exhausted all of our options on a property like that. And yes, we've been sitting on it for years and years and years, but we've never really done with it. Now maybe's the time with, with the ferry running. There's renewed interest in opening up tourism-style businesses, community groups. There's been a project out in Councillor Durkey's area, the Old Stones Project, that that seems to be turning out, you know, interesting, because I actually went out there and used that on a cellphone app I have, and it was quite interesting, and maybe that's something like a community group like Old Stones could possibly do with that. And Councillor Cushing had pointed out some night fishing, I didn't know that. It might be as simple as putting out a placard, or maybe even our own tourism organization, Yastin might be able to do something with that. So putting out an expression of interest certainly wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. Councillor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thanks, Lauren, I didn't know anything about the night fishing, that's really interesting. There's some really amazing pictures that you can access on the internet, actually, about the history of the fishing industry in Port Maitland, that, you know, one of the discussions with Bill Curry in particular, we talked about, you know, just putting pictures up in there for people to look at. I can't imagine all these other little lighthouses having bathrooms either, so to your point, Warden, that I think people just visit them, but I don't know that they would have facilities. I know we've certainly developed Cape Frisbee, but the little place in Cape St. Mary, I don't know, they probably don't, or Gilbert's Cove. So, you know, I can't imagine if, I think just, it's about perking the place up, giving it a paint job, I know that there, it has to be done in a special way because of the lead paint that's being used, and I'm just wondering if we can look back to see what, you know, I know there was some research done and the costs associated with that, you know, what would it cost, can we just inquire just to see what would it cost to, to maintain that?
So I think we did attach a document to a previous agenda, but we'll bring it forward again as business arising, because there was some consulting work done to arrive at a figure which was handy to $60,000, I forget how many years ago, and it was a Class C estimate, I think, and my experience has been you've got a factor of about two on any of those, so, anyway, absolutely, Councillor Durkey, there is old data that we can take a look at again to help council think about what they want to do in next steps.
Yeah, I just, I guess, at this point, I would like to recommend that we do not put it up for surplus.
Go ahead, Councillor Cushing.
Just one more part on the historic fact of it, and Councillor Durkey mentioned about all the pictures of, of the fishing industry in the Port Maitland area, and what comes to my mind is, I don't know how many of you have ever visited the Lawrence Sweeney Museum, Fisheries Museum down on Water Street, and if you went there and took a view of that, this was, of course, was done by the Sweeney family, but all the pictures and all the artifacts that they have there, it was, it's truly amazing what the waterfront and yarmulkes looked like, and I, automatically I started visioning of what that little lighthouse could have for pictures in history and whatnot of the Port Maitland area, so, you know, something to think about.
Okay, this time then, do we want to recommend to, to council that we hold off on putting it up for surplus, or?
I think that that would be a negative motion, so probably if you just do nothing, what we will do through business arising, our whole business will bring that report forward, and then council, if they would like to do an expression of interest, they can give direction for that to happen.
Is that something the council would be, or do you want to wait until you have a, under business bringing, being brought forward, and then have a, do the expression of interest, or do you want them to do something up now? Okay, we'll just be bringing it forward again. Okay, thank you very much. 5.3 Municipal Bursaries, you had that in your package? What is the, go ahead.
So this is, I'm told by my trusted staff, in terms of our annual cycle, that this is generally the time of the year where council takes a peek at that bursary program that you offer, and you look at the mandate for the program, you look at the amount of the bursary, you look at the application process, you look at what you're trying to do with the bursary, those sorts of things, and it's an opportunity to get things lined up for the coming year, because as, as you'll see, if you took, if you had the opportunity to take a peek at it, we're gonna advertise it next month, so, right now it's seven, two $750 bursaries, which hasn't been changed to reflect inflation for some years.
Is there any questions or concerns from council? We do a follow-up, they have to send us a report, or their academic marks or whatever. Item 5.4 Investment Attractions Film Industry, Councillor Patty Durkey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Warden, I was seeking some direction either by consensus or a sense of what you might want in terms of having a motion of council moving forward.
Okay, I apologize. Go ahead, Councillor Allen.
Well, I see, I see where our C O is going with this, and I'm kind of in agreement with her. Cost of education is rising all the time. Maybe we should look at increasing our bursaries to $1,000 each instead of the $750, or, how many bursaries do we give out now, two? Or maybe looking at giving a third one out or something to? I think I'm more inclined to say, you know, with the cost of education, I personally, I'd like to see us up our bursaries to maybe $1,000 each, $250 to each on top of each bursary, just because of the, I mean, we see it every day, we're hearing about it in the news, that the cost of education is just rising and rising and rising, so these students are, you know, we could help them.
If, if I may, before Deputy Warden, when the municipality and the only other person sitting here that has some background knowledge of this would be the executive assistant, Liz, when the municipality originally done this, it was one $1,500 bursary, was it not, when we originally, originally done it? Was it 500? It was a long time ago, that's why I wasn't sure, and then we jumped it to two, two bursaries, so, yes, the cost has gone up, but when we originally started them, it was basically for anybody that wanted to get into, I'll say, the vocational side, it wasn't so much university and college and so on. Well, that kind of changed over the years, and so, well, for, for any of that, at the academic side or the vocational, last year we gave one of the bursaries, went to a, I can't think of a, Cahoon, was it? And he was gonna be going down to Shelburne for a course they had down there and so on, and that was our original intent and so on, so, yeah, costs have gone up, whether we go to three, or whether you increase them to $1,000 apiece, that's up to you, but, anyway. Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. If I do remember correctly, it wasn't all that many years ago, I believe it was about four or five, that we upped the bursaries from 500 to 750, you know, and I believe it was, I can't remember if it was you in your first term as warden, or if it was the first term of, of, I can't remember, former warden Goodwin, we did do that, and I do understand that the costs of college, or school education is going up, and every time that we seem to decide on who's getting the bursary, I always seem to have a special place in my heart for someone taking the trades, and I had always made that clear to everyone every year. As far as... As far as upping the bursary, I'm not sure. I would like to keep it status quo, to tell you the truth. But the CAO had mentioned that maybe we should look at it. I believe that we should forward this, recommend that we forward this to council to keep it status quo. But if some of you have any arguments to change it when we bring it to the regular council meeting, I think that would be the time that you could possibly change it and even send it back to committee hall. But that's my recommendation because as the CAO said, the letters and stuff are going out next month. So we've got to move pretty quickly on this if we're going to decide to change it. But maybe that'd be something in the future. But my recommendation would be to move this forward and leave a status quo for council to move forward on.
Okay. Councillor Cushing?
I agree with Councillor Cunningham there about we're moving it to our regular council meeting. Give us some time to do some thinking about it and ask a few more questions of our staff. And, you know, how it will affect us in the long run. But I think definitely should be looked at in whether to keep it status quo or move it up or add an additional one. I think that's very, very progressive of us to do something like that. And, but I'd like to make more of a decision on a regular meeting.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Warden, what I can do for council's benefit is I'll do a little bit of legwork, a little bit of research. I'll write a brief for you. I'll indicate what the increase year over year of tuition has been since you last adjusted the amount of the bursary. I'll see if I can pull together a little bit of information around what our community is looking for in terms of skill sets. You may, Deputy Warden Cunningham mentioned that, you know, if our community needs something more than another thing, maybe you want to direct the money towards making sure that need is fulfilled in our community. I'll do a little bit of research anyway to help you think more about what you're trying to accomplish with the bursaries.
Go ahead, Councillor Allen.
Yeah, I didn't, I, maybe I was misunderstood. I wasn't looking to change it today.
No, no.
I just think it's something, again, similar to what John's saying. I think it should be, it should be part of the conversation. I guess is where I'm trying to go with that. So again, what I was going to mention, like, you know, I just wrote it down. Just the cost compared to four years ago. If it was four years ago that you changed it to the 750, would be nice to know what the difference is between now and then. So we can compare.
Yeah. No further discussion on that? Okay, we'll move on into 5.4, the Investment Attractions Film Industry. Councillor Durkey, go ahead. You had the floor.
Okay, I'm excited about this. I had a meeting with Melanie Solomon from Film Screen Nova Scotia. She's the Locations Manager for the province. And we were discussing, you know, how can we build on the film that, the industry or how can we build on the excitement, yep, coming excitement of the, when the film, the lighthouse comes out. I know that in the, in the magazine world that has to do with films, it's getting some hype and interest. So I think everybody's getting excited about the fact that this film that's been done in, at Cape Rashue and in Halifax will get, draw some attention. Anyway, so they do not have a lot of information from the, from the Yarmouth County area online to give producers when they start looking. And so she has suggested that businesses, the municipality, the town, and individuals who want to encourage growth of the film industry in Yarmouth, go to Screen Nova Scotia's website and go to, it's called Starring Your Property. And if you, if people are interested in having their property used in the film industry, then it would be nice for them to register because what it does, it gives them more places that would be interested in having movies use their facilities. And I know I'm, my word is, we need to get a list of assets in the area that could be used for film. I would like to suggest that our municipality film and take pictures of some of the assets we have so that it gets recorded online with Screen Nova Scotia so that producers and directors will know what we have available for assets if they should choose to want to start looking at this area to increase film production. And I know that just came out really poorly, but I'm at a loss for words today, I guess. But anyway, just trying to see if we can develop something in this area to... The other thing that Melanie said, if you have a website or information sheets about what we have to offer in terms of locations, then they would be willing to share that with the industry when they go on trips to LA or New York, et cetera. So I'd like to get some thoughts about trying to promote the industry in the area.
Thoughts from council?
So I guess what I'm asking for is if we would like to, to direct staff at some point to build a website or build a sheet of what we have available to offer to, to the film industry. Not, not, wouldn't cost a lot of money to do something like that.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Councillor Durkey, you're talking more of the area, not just the municipality of Yarmouth.
Right, I'm talking about Yarmouth County. Anybody, the town, the, our municipality to feature and show assets, pictures of things that we have available where, like our airport. You know, we have an airport that's set in the 60s. There's one picture of the airport on this, it's called Real Scout. It's just the front of the airport. Our airport is unique because of, it's still set in the 60s style. And, you know, we need to get that information and pictures out there so that people can see, oh, you know, great. There's a, there's an airport that's not in use commercially that much at the moment and could be used for filming.
I think that's a great idea. I think, and another thing now with the technology of drones, you know, all over Yarmouth County, there's thousands of places, you know, especially the Tuscan Islands and places like that, you know. There's a lot of coverage with the Tuscan Islands now with Lucien having that tour. But I don't know. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. I just, I know that the industry, the crew that were here were really happy with, with everything that went down with the filming of the lighthouse. And if we can capitalize on that and possibly get some of the producers, directors to, to make comments about how successful things were working down here, then that would help. It's a, it's a new, it would be a new industry for us in the area.
So I guess my question would be, what are we looking at? If you want to do something, is it $1.98 or 498,000?
I have, I have a lot of questions around it. I'm thinking of our priorities, our action item register. I'm thinking of scope. So if we're talking about the whole county, then it's a dialogue with our partners on where an idea like that might fit in their priorities. It's defining which assets we would want to capture. It's a budget. It's who's going to do it? When is it going to get done? Because this is, this is a large project. This is not a quick and dirty. This is a large project and it has to be done with excellence for it to be successful. So though, I just have questions right now that we could work through if council has an interest in going, you know, going down the road until such a time is for whatever reason you don't want to anymore. But, yeah, I have a lot of questions and it, you know, it's part of an investment readiness piece. I'm not sure where the film industry fits in terms of our regional economic development strategy. I don't, I don't know. I'm sure there's answers to those questions, but I myself, I don't know.
Go ahead, Councillor Cushing.
Yeah, the topic brought up on the film industry and what to do here, I give valet to it, but I, I don't think it's a decision that we definitely can make today or anytime in the near future because as our CAO was mentioning, there's a lot of what ifs and questions to be asked and partners too. And there will be a big dollar value to it probably. So I don't think it's something that we need to make a decision right today on.
If I could, Mr. Warden. Sorry, Councillor Durkey. What I could offer, because I know council needs a lot of information, is I could work with our EDO and through the other EDOs and the other units just get a sense of any interest that might be there from our partners as a starting place for you in terms of having a formal conversation with your partners to see if they have an interest in doing, doing it on a county level. I, I mean, there's no harm in doing that.
Go ahead, Councillor.
I don't think at this time we have to do anything big. I think basically it's just capturing some pictures and loading them on to the Starring Your Property to show what we have available. I don't think we need to develop any big packages. I just think that at this point, we just need to get started with a little bit of information about what we have. I know that the REN also has information that we might be able to access for that because they've done a lot of capturing of all the assets in the area. I know YASTA would probably have some great shots done already of the area that we might be able to use. I also think that, yeah. I also know that Mark had been working on a document saying if we were to get another location group came and said, yes, we want something in your area, then I know that he was working on a package to have available to give out with regards to our bylaws and our policies, et cetera. The process you would have to follow if you wanted to use municipal property to, for another film. So that's, that's already been worked on. It's, that's the after component. This part is like the before component, which is basically, this is what we have to offer. So I think we, we might be able to start it on a small scale and not have to do anything big at this point.
And the only, if I can, Mr. Warden, the only other concern would be if there's a particular asset that this council has an interest in loading on this database, if we're not the only owner, we would need permission from the other owners as well.
Absolutely. And I've already had that discussion with Natalie. It was actually Natalie, the EDO of the town, who, who put this bug in my ear and said, you know, we should try and capitalize on this, especially with the movie coming out. The suggestion is to, 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 any comments that people make or anything that comes out from magazines, we should be posting in social media to kind of get people interested because they're going to be looking at where this is going. And the fact that it's, it's a unique style of the way they've been shooting it is they shot it in old film in black and white. So the, the comments are pretty cool to say, hey, we should be watching for this. This could be pretty unique, so.
Mr. Warden, was there a project committee of individuals from community and municipalities who, who worked with the film production company?
Not directly.
I mean, when, in terms of leveraging the opportunity as a follow-up, it's, you know, like, where does that kind of lay?
Nope, there was nothing. But if, if there's no other comments, I have a couple. You've heard me mention it in the past, you know, you have to sell yourself as a business and so on. I think there, I'm not saying that there's an opportunity tomorrow's style thing. But I believe we have, I'll say, an asset that we have. I would suggest that you bring Mr. Clark back, who was the locations person for the lighthouse, and have a discussion with him because these packages that you would do up don't have to be into a lot of detail, but I would think you can do them up and send to other location managers and so on in the film industry of what we have here, some of the heritage properties, the different wharves, et cetera, and so on. Because when Mr. Clark was here, he, he and I spoke off and on. He took a lot of pictures and not just of the lighthouse. He took pictures of a lot of things within the municipality and within the town because he does site locations for, like, this hour has 22 minutes and so on. And he has, as he told me, a catalog of houses and so on, what they're able to do in those houses. And he said, they'll call me from 22 minutes. I need a house. I need this. I need this, that. He said, I just flipped through my catalog. There's a house there and it's, it's in Lunenburg. He said, and down we go. He said, so I think there is an opportunity, but I do have to err on the side of caution. All of a sudden, you don't want to have a $150,000 budget out there and it could be five or six years before you recoup. But I do believe there's an opportunity to, to sell ourselves and that we should do. That we should do. Councillor Durkey, again?
Thank you. I, I agree. I think there's an opportunity there. I honestly, again, can say I don't think it's going to cost a lot of money. And for this Starring Your Property, it's basically just, it's a form online that people fill out. And I'm encouraging property owners here to do the same thing. Individual property owners who'd be interested in being involved in, in the film industry so that this, this site, it's called Real Scout, that's available to all, worldwide for people to see what you have available. So again, business owners as well, not, not us, particularly the other business owners who'd be willing to, to get involved should, should do that. That's the whole idea. So the person that I was dealing with, Sean linked me, is, is the location manager for all Nova Scotia. So it is Screen Nova Scotia. They oversee everything that comes to, they deal with all the producers and directors. Anybody who wants to produce anything in Nova Scotia goes through Screen Nova Scotia. And then they hire, like Sean, as a location manager to, to look for different places. So I, I think it's a neat opportunity that if it doesn't cost a lot of money, then it, like, again, it's, it's basically filling out forms and sticking pictures online is the beginning of it.
So where do we want to go with this, this one?
Another thought that I had while we were debating too, you know, with respect to privately held assets like homes and businesses, we have some communication vehicles where we can promote this opportunity. So the District of Yarmouth has a newsletter, as does the town and Argyle and the Western REN. So if Councillor Durkey is interested in writing an article, I'll see that it gets in our newsletter and I'll see that it gets shared as broadly as possible because this database seems to be a go-to place. And, you know, if somebody is a little bit nervous, it doesn't seem to be too invasive. And anyway, just another thought I had.
Go ahead, Councillor.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate, yes, there's all kinds of things I think that we can, you know, we can talk about or move towards. Just let's start thinking about this. And again, it's up to private individuals to do their own thing. I'm just talking for us in terms of setting, putting, putting a few of our own assets that make it, make us look amazing. We have to market ourselves.
Thank you. Okay, then move on to 5.5 for information. Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities News Release. You had that in your pack, or in your package, but also it was sent out through the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities that Juanita Spencer is the new chief executive officer. She used to work for, I think it was Spring Garden Road, yes, Spring Garden Area Business Association. And she starts on February 4th of 2019. I'll commend her for stepping into the, into the position and so on. But I've had a lot of, a fair amount of communication with Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities lately and so on. And a couple of the items that were resolutions that were passed at the fall conference, and as you're well aware, one is CAP. And I'm going to ask that our CAO here in the not-too-distant future gives an overview of the CAP to us again as councillors. I believe we have a couple of new councillors and so on. And you should be brought up to speed and so on, what the CAP really is and so on. speed and so on, and what the CAP really is and so on. It was implemented quite a few years ago, and there's been talk by a lot of municipal units, well, about having the CAP removed. And P V S C has been looking at having the CAP removed, and it's been a sticking point at almost every one of our fall conferences and so on. So, this year it was passed as a resolution and the federation is to be looking into it. I hate to say it this time, it was number one resolution that was passed, but it is not number one on their ticket right now. It is not number one. Number one is E P R, and they're working diligently on that. They are going to work on CAP. They put out a request for some pilots, municipalities and so on, to participate and so on, and I don't know, I really don't know how this is all going to work out on the CAP. I know it affects H R M, C B R M, and I'm not sure how much it would affect Queens in the respect, it would be dollars in their pocket, but I'm not sure on municipalities like ourselves. We've been working very well with the CAP system, but I don't know, I'm not inundated with telephone calls, I'm not inundated by people on the street that their property assessment is way out or way under or anything else. So, I'm not sure. I'm really not sure. But anyway, I know the F C M is, or F M and S is kind of, it's on a back burner, but they're still going to look into it, but, so I don't know where that's, where that's going to go. So, she's walking into a very organization that is torn right now where they're, which one they're going to be doing. Anyway, go ahead Deputy Warden.
I think that's a great idea that you bring forward the report in regards to CAP. I know the reason why it was put forward and it will be a very hot political issue. If there's any changes made to the CAP system, in my opinion, there's going to be lots of for and lots of against. But you're absolutely right, the new executive officer is going to, is going to be, it's going to be interesting, that's for sure.
Sure. So, you would like the, or want the C A O to set up an early evening or something meeting, or could it be done at one of our, at a committee of the whole meeting or?
I'll give it some thought.
Yeah, you worked on to that, but like I said, should we send a letter of congratulations on behalf of our municipality? And I don't know if do an invite also, that if she has the opportunity, that we'd like to meet with her through staff, as councillor and so on, or at a, okay, thank you.
There's consensus on that?
Yes.
The wardens, yep.
I kind of noticed a lot of head bobbing, yes, so I'm sorry, I shouldn't ask that. Item 5.6 for information, letters from the RENs, the internet file update, and you have in that package also our letters to back that up. Was there any concerned questions and so on? Well, see, we don't have internet, we can't move that fast. I'm sorry. Any questions or concerns? Go ahead councillor Durkey.
Not a question or concern, just some information. I did attend the Develop Nova Scotia presentation on internet in Digby, I guess a couple of months ago now, and they do have a timeline, they are working on it, they have put out, I believe, requests for proposals, they are gathering a list of companies that are interested and participating, and again, the problem with it, it's just all, it all takes time. But I know that they are putting a lot of time into trying to get this done, and my understanding was that I don't think you'll see anything happening in terms of improvements to internet until 2020 because of all the contracts that need to be signed, et cetera.
Yeah. Yes, sorry. I have my own personal opinion on internet. I think sometimes, in business, sometimes you have to take the, as they used to say, the bull by the horns and do something, but, anyway, we'll move on. Item 5.7, T I R, Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This year seems to be a strange year for ICE, and it's another strange year of this is I've been seeming to get many more complaints in regards to road salting, brush cutting, and different things like that across the municipality District of Yarmouth. I know it's been an unusual year in regards to weather, again, we don't seem to have a usual year anymore, what we consider usual, and I just wanted to bring up the discussion on, I know in just regular talks with my fellow councillors in not only the municipality of Yarmouth, but also in the town and municipality of Argyle, that they seem to be getting a few more complaints as well. But rather than going straight to the main district or our main district office, is maybe, I'm wondering if there's been a policy change in provincial government or something like that, and I'm also thinking that maybe we should send a letter to the Minister of Transportation saying that we've had a few more complaints than usual, and wondering if there's been any policy changes or any funding changes in that regards to funding of T I R. The reason why I say policy changes is this is just an observation of mine. We used to see the brine truck out a little more often, used to go along the 340 before storm, used to see that they had laid down the brine by the, I guess, the slopes in the road of the stuff that you used to see. But I don't see that no more, at least on, not on the main highways like the 101 and 103, but the secondary highways like the Highway 340, the major routes. Now, mind you, I don't expect every road to be brined, but this is just some observations that I have, and I'm just curious if there's any policy changes within T I R Nova Scotia.
Are there any comments and so on pertaining to councillor Christian?
Good point on the policy part. I mean, I speak with T I R quite often, and there's a number of issues that seem to kind of baffle my mind when they tell me they have one tractor to do the mowing, the side road mowings, like this mowing's a one tractor for the municipality of Yarmouth. I mean, and I'm always hearing that there's, you know, I've, you know, I've certainly voiced my opinion on the lack of signage, replacement of signage through my district, and I can imagine it's everywhere else, that they, again, they don't have the manpower to look for all the signs or to install them, but that's where I had offered, you give me the list of signs in my district and I will go see if they're there. Because I live in my district, it doesn't mean I know where all the signs are because I don't need a sign to tell me where I'm going. So, I've offered that help, but it always seems to be spinning back to not enough staff for, as councillor Cunningham was saying, perhaps there's a different policy out there now and whatnot, but I think, you know, I think when they do vote, I think they do good work. You know, I have no complaints on that part, and they're always open to, for discussion. But again, of some of the concerns I brought forward, and councillor Cunningham had brought forward, and the other councillors around have brought forward, I think a letter off to Minister Heinz would be appropriate and just let them know that we're not really, how can I say, that we're not really complaining, but we're concerned of the situation down in this area. Maybe we're isolated, I don't know, but it probably wouldn't hurt to have one out and of course, copy to our M L A Zach Churchill, so, good.
Good, thank you. Does anybody else have some concerns and so on? I believe that Deputy Warden has brought up a good point. I have been approached so far, I'll say, this winter, more than I have been at any other winter while I've been a councillor. I've been approached in grocery stores, I've been approached out in parking lots and so on, and whether people are a little more concerned about traveling on the roads, that they're wet, slushy, or that there's ice on them and so on, that they're asking, you know, why haven't the plows gone out? And usually my first comment, well, you have to understand that as a municipal councillor, the roads don't belong to the municipality, they're the provincial roads, and we have no jurisdiction and so on. I do not know why or how come, whether their trucks are broke down or they just, I, but I do share their concerns because I have to travel on those same said roads. And so, I believe that Deputy Warden has brought forward a great point. I think we should, or my feeling is that maybe we should send a letter to the minister and not just pertaining to the winter roads, but to, as councillor Christian said, about signage and so on. There is, and then it's on their records and so on that we are concerned because there is a lot of signs in my district that are down and so on, and some that are even broken or hanging there. And, yeah, I don't know why it is, but the question should be asked and so on. And I believe he brought up a good point, you know, has there been a policy change? That's being very diplomatic and so on, and I think that's the proper way to go. So, would it be the consensus that I sign off on a letter, asking, have staff write a letter and? Yes, okay. Okay, consensus, got you. Okay, you have that. Okay, the last item at this time is 5.8, and it's by me, a business meeting. Over the last number of years, I've often thought that we have a lot of people in our municipality that are very, very dedicated to the municipality, very concerned, and they work very diligently, whether they're on a volunteer organization to help benefit the municipality or to help benefit Yarmouth County. There's also a lot of businesses out there that put a lot of time and effort into their business and so on, and as in anything, you sometimes have social events where you invite people to come and, you know, I'll say have a social evening. And my thought has been over the last number of years, and I've mentioned it, I know to a few of you as councillors and at previous council, that I was wondering if you would be interested, and I haven't discussed this with the C A O, so it's going to be kind of a surprise to her also, so I'm quite sure that the C A O may have a comment on this item. I was wondering if you as councillors would be interested in inviting on a, not a schedule, but if I went out and asked that councillor Allen would go out and go in his area and talk to a couple of the businesses and see if they would be interested in coming in and meeting with councillors that can meet if he choose, if they're available on a Thursday night and only three councillors can show up on that Thursday night, that would be fine. And just have an overview discussion on what do they see as, I'm going to try to use, I'll say impediments to the municipality for them to want to move forward, or what is the reason why they have moved forward, or what do they see could be an improvement to the municipalities, whether it's the building bylaws or our P A C rules and regulations and so on. Talk with them, make them feel as though, make them feel, they are an important part of our municipality. We should be asking them some questions sometimes or letting them have a discussion with us. Then maybe two months later, I'd ask councillor Durkey, or councillor Durkey would ask a couple of business owners to come in if only four of us can meet that time, and it could be four different ones, but have a discussion with some of our business. Even invite, you know, organizations to come in and have a discussion with us, you know, if they find this is a hardship or they see, you know, well, if you guys would do this or do that, maybe it would benefit the municipality. That's been my thought, and I just kind of wanted to throw it out there and see what you folks, or you as councillors, would feel about doing something like that, and then we could try and set it up and go forward from there. And I'm not saying that it would be next month or anything like that, but maybe down the road. So, I see I have a couple of mics, so I guess I'll start with councillor Christian.
Thank you, Warden. I believe you mentioned this one other time, and at that time, I certainly agree, it's a great idea, but let me reflect back on some of my personal experience. I looked after a large commercial building one time, and the owners of the building were from away, and what I had done one time, I had mentioned it to them to, if, when the owners came down to Yarmouth, that I would organize a meeting with some business owners, and, which we did, and we held it at the rudders, and it was a great networking that happened there, you know, so a lot of people learned from each other what they were doing, how the things are going, what was needed, and, you know, because basically I was trying to, I meant the building, of course, right, but, in which we did. And, but that'd be a great opportunity to bring businesses together and let them talk to us and let them share information amongst themselves, and I bet you it would be very beneficial to our municipality. I'm very certain of that.
Councillor LeBlanc?
Yeah. I don't know, I remember the time that we, it was a different situation, that different businesses wanted to meet with council just to discuss something, and it went all wrong. It went bad. You know which one I'm talking about? And I'd be, I'd be kind of scared of that, but that was just one experience that we had at that time, that this was about three years ago. It went bad.
Well, if I may, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead Deputy Warden.
I have to reiterate councillor LeBlanc's comment that it went bad. However, at those times, we did not have any staff members there. That all stemmed from an issue in people in regards to building, and it was, I found that that was more of a provincial issue in building codes, but I do understand where the warden is coming from. I know that there's probably a lot of things in our municipal planning strategies and land use bylaws that are very restrictive. I know that. I know that things are quite restrictive in regards to demolition of properties about the fees on some things that contractors have to pay. Like if you're a private citizen, you've only got to pay $500 for demolition permit. If you're a contractor, you've got to pay $2,000. And that's something that we've changed recently, and that's something that I'm very concerned about. A lot of things that I hear in my area from different business owners, high-speed internet, cell phone access, to look on their businesses, they don't have it. What did we just discuss here about internet and in regards to Develop Nova Scotia and the REN, the letter we have in our agendas today? There's a lot of issues. Maybe there's something in there that we never even thought of. Maybe it's something that we can help them with, whether it might not be a municipal issue, with our planning strategies or block and block bylaws, but it may be something that we can push the N S F M to change something that's not right in there. We were just looking at one, the contractors is what we were looking at originally when we, I was also uncomfortable in that, by the way, but I think there's a lot, there's a large range of things, like there's people that work on the internet, maybe we've talked about tiny homes, maybe someone wants to build a tiny business. I don't know, and that's something that maybe we should get out because I know that my area is going to be a little bit different than councillor Allen's and what's going to be in councillor Durkey, and what's going to be in the wardens' area. I think it's a good idea, but I do caution that maybe we should have someone there at least from staff taking notes.
Oh, yeah.
It should be a small group.
Oh, yes.
I find, there's an old saying that if you have a meeting that you can't feed with more than one full pizza box, then that meeting is too big, it gets unruly, so, you know, a few people rather than a few dozen, you know, would be my suggestion, and I think that we should tentatively take some baby steps and move forward, that maybe invite Mark, our business coordinator, to look at like that. I think there's a lot of things that we could do that we don't do right now that would help. help. And unless you get out there, and say if a business owner told me something that they'd like to see changed, I might not off the top of my head think of a change that we could possibly make, maybe the warden, councillor Allen, whoever. I think it's an idea that we should pursue, but at a small basis.
Yep. Thank you. Councillor Durkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I understand your perspective and where you're coming from, and, and I think meeting with individual business owners is a good idea to a certain extent. But as councillor LeBlanc has suggested, I don't want it to be a negative situation. I wouldn't want to be where we met with people and all they did was complain the whole time. I don't think that's what we're really looking for. I think we're looking for how can we help you scenario, as opposed to, you know, we don't want to take the approach of what are we doing wrong. I also am under the understanding that Mark is meeting, and maybe through you to our CAO, you can confirm, with business owners, and we also have the REN doing retention and expansion. So I don't know if it would be a benefit to speak to them first, to see who they've met with, to see if there have been concerns. Not sure. So, you know, I'm on the fence with this, but I, I'm just, I don't want it to be a negative session where people just come at us and complain.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, CAO, and then councillor Cushing.
Okay, I'm going to try and be methodical in my approach to this. It's important for elected representatives to be available to their electors and in their different roles. That's healthy. What we've been learning, as we've been taking some training on community engagement through our asset management pieces, that an engagement with a group of people and their elected officials, the intent on what you want to achieve with that engagement has to be clear, and that, the frame around that meeting or that discussion has to be clear. So in this particular example, I would suggest, based on what the warden is saying in terms of having a series of meetings, is that it's the same style at every meeting, it's the same questions at every meeting, it's the same model across the board, so that you can compare apples and apples. I would concur with councillor Durkey, that we have some pieces of work in progress that this should align with, it shouldn't contradict, and it shouldn't step on toes. So, for example, in June, when council gave the directive to do a visitation program, Mark is actively out there doing that, actively working in cooperation with the REN to make sure that it enhances the BRI program, and gives you additional information that that program isn't giving you, which is what you asked for. So, you know, that's a process that's going to go to the end of this fiscal year, and then you're going to receive some information. There is no replacement for a healthy one-on-one relationship development exchange. And so there is value in supporting the work that Mark is doing, and in supporting the work that the REN is doing for us. There is value in, as an elected body, in you developing direct relationships with that community as well. So as long as we are intentional about our design, we're intentional about how we want to frame the discussion when we do it, and we are working collaboratively with our partners, I'm not, I'm not thinking it's a huge risk. Again, making sure that we know we're going to be given difficult questions, and we're going to be given questions on areas that are not in our mandate, and being prepared to answer them appropriately, and making sure that we manage expectations. So those are some of my initial thoughts.
Councillor Cushing?
Thank you. Again, that wasn't, I wasn't hoping for any type of decision tonight to make this happen. Again, it should be put in for a discussion, meeting at once in the future, and as our CAO mentioned, it's part of our asset management that we're working on, about community involvement. So I kind of grabbed a hold of that when, when my thought, and when my past experience that I, that I've done was very successful. But definitely, we should be reaching out to the places that are already, that we have in places, for instance, Mark, we have the REN, we have, oh, what's it called here? Chamber of Commerce, you know. So there's lots out there that we should work with, to see how to structure this in a very formal way, and let's say, asking the same questions each time that we meet with them. And the CAO is absolutely right, that a one-on-one with a business, you can do more business with, by doing something like that. I spoke to a business owner here at a hockey game the other night there, and we discussed quite, about how he built his business to what it is, is today, sort of thing, and that one-on-one approach is, is a very successful thing, and I think we have lots of opportunity to do that, because we've got a lot of partners out there that we can work with together to come up with something that's going to benefit everyone. My thoughts.
Councillor Allen?
I like the idea. My concern comes back to the stepping on the toes. We have hundreds of businesses in our municipality, and how do you select who you bring in? How do you, I mean, I'm, I know the idea would be to listen to all of them, but we as a group would never be able to facilitate. We, I don't want to sound lazy, but I don't see how us, as a group, would have the time to bring in a couple at a time and hear from everybody. And, I just, like, I agree, we have Mark and the REN, that I thought we had kind of tasked this type of job to. And I'm not saying I don't want to do this, because I think one-on-one, you learn some things, and, you know, information can go from us to them, and so, back to us, so forth. It's just how do you not step on someone's toes if you bring in two businesses, and you have two businesses that think, that maybe have issues? You know, I don't want to be the one to go out and select two businesses to come in here, and have two businesses that think they should have been in here, because they have issues that I didn't know about. You know, I guess that's where I'm going with that, if that makes any sense to you.
It does. You've all brought up a lot of good points, both good and bad, or, I shouldn't use that word, that's a negative word. But my intent, or my thought was, okay, if, it was kind of agreeable that we would try this, that I would sit down with the CAO, and we kind of format something. I did not want any of the businesses to come in here and start saying, well, this bylaw or building bylaw is too restrictive, this is too bad, this is too hard, this is it. I want to see a wider street, I want to see this, I want to see that. I want our businesses, our volunteer organisations, to see us as we are approachable. I don't talk to Daniel because he can never get anything done for me. That, that's out there. It's in your area, it's in my area, why go see, you know, well, go see your councillor. For what? He ain't going to do nothing for me. And I just thought this was maybe an opportunity for us to start, and we'd have to, I'll say, do an experimental type pilot project onto it. And the reason why I picked on you, I shouldn't say picked on you, suggested, in your area, I'm going to say, there's Glenn Nickerson, Gordy Muse, and Daniel Muse, three service stations. Only one sells gas, but the other two do service work. And can they come in here and ask us, well, I'd like to have lower taxes? Are you going to lower the taxes for them? No. But they may come in here and say, you know, well, I find that signage is really laxing in the area. Okay? What might we do from the municipal side is signage that would help? Well, that there's, I'll say, service, or car, or vehicle service repairs somewhere in handy, this kind of thing. Now, because TIR don't do that, they put speed limits and information signs. But they may say, Leland, you know, or Daniel, there's been the information sign going down to Pinky's Point, it's been down for four years. Well, okay, did you notice it? And it was brought up to the interview committee, when we sat down here quite a while ago, about all the things that we, as councillors, hadn't noticed, because we were used, you know, just, hey, Lauren said, he knows where every place is in Pembroke, in his area. But people that don't come in, the sign is missing. And it was pointed out about our industrial, or our business park. Wow, didn't realise it. I drove by it every time I came here, never realised the lack. So I just kind of thought this might be an opportunity, I'm trying to think of Dayton Red and White, is there anything, you know, I know what he would ask for, I want the sidewalk, extend the sidewalk. Are we going to do that? Eventually, but it's not going to be this year, next year, but eventually there'll be a sidewalk going down through there. But is there something else that he might suggest that would be beneficial to tourists when they come here? And so, that was my concern, and whether it was any industry, I have, I call it Rob Porter's, the lobster company down there. Could I do anything for him directly? No, but he might, may have a suggestion of, you know, maybe you should put a sign, or, you know, that there is an industry down here, same as over in, you know, John's Cove. You know, put a big sign, 500 boats fish over this port. You know, just information that you and I don't see. And I thought, you know, same there. Councillor Durkey approached TIR to put the signs for the provincial park. Well, those were things that I never realised before, she noticed it, and so on, and moved forward. But there's other things, once she's got them down to the park, once she's got them down to the beach, there should be other signs, if an organisation does the lighthouse there, you know, there's a lighthouse there. I'm just saying, that was my original intent, was to kind of get information, not for them to come in here and say, well, we don't like this, we don't like that. You know, they can say it, but we're not going to change it, I mean, that's just things we'd have to work on. That was my intent. Go ahead.
No, and that intention, I think, is a great intention. I do. But what I was just trying to say is, as you said, and I'm just, I'm going to pick on myself again.
Yeah.
I can go invite Glenn Nickerson, Gordy Muse, and Daniel Muse in here, because they have the three service stations. But their concerns may not be the same as the two campgrounds that I have, that maybe are looking at expansion and trying to figure out signage. And same with the two fish plants I have in Pinky's Point, or the fish processor that we have out in Somerville.
Yeah.
Right? And, and that's where I, that's what I was talking about, the stepping on the toes, because I've got those three coming in, and by the time I can get the other ones in, who knows how long it could be before we could get, you know, because everybody's going to want to bring in a few from each, from each district.
Over a period of time, yeah.
That's, that's all I was trying to say. I, you know, I think the intention is great, I agree. We should definitely have some kind of line of communication open to the businesses in our municipality. I think we should be hearing them, just little concerns, any kind of concerns. It's just to pick and choose how to, how to touch everyone, because we really should be touching everyone. I know it's a big job, but we really should, yeah.
And that's a real good point. I hadn't, I guess, dealt, thought that far into it, and so on, I just, so on and so on. I guess what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask the CAO for her thoughts, and how should we, how should we approach it? Let it lie, or should we try and work on something over the next few months to bring forward?
I understand the spirit with which you're thinking about doing this work, and it's commendable. When I'm, when I put my own business owner hat on, or when I put my hat on from when I was doing economic development, the thing that I'm going to raise here, and I know that there are business owners all around the table, so you'll all know, you are all inundated with requests for your time. People want to talk to you and pick your brain, or they want to inspect something, or they want to verify something. You know, so for example, right now, we have, ACOA is on the ground knocking on business doors, NSBI is on the ground knocking on business doors, the REN is on the ground knocking on doors, the Chamber's on the ground knocking on doors, and in our district, we have Mark out there right now knocking on doors. So we have five, five right now knocking on doors, asking very similar questions. So my mind is like, hmm, as a business owner, do they get fatigued by that, particularly given the number of times when what they bring forward, nobody seems to be able to do anything about? And that's frustrating to business owners. So I have a few ideas rolling around in my brain, where maybe what we could do to begin is get a sense of how much demand there would be for that level of service. So I have, I'm completely open to batting around some ideas with the warden, and maybe bringing back something to council, but, you know, by the end of the fiscal year, for something for you to think about. I'm completely open to that, because I do understand the spirit, and I understand the balance you're trying to strike as well.
Okay. Okay. Is that fair for council, that CAO and myself will have some discussions and so on, and just seeing them bring something back to you guys, and so on? Okay. Was there any further business of councils this time? Deputy Warden, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair. On December 19th, in a regular council meeting, there was an NSFM report. I'd like that brought back to the next committee of the whole. I have an issue with item number four, the political activity policy that's in there. And the reason why I do is because, as you all may or may not know, back in 2013, I run for political office, and I'm just curious as to why there was something in here that was changed, and what it was changed from. We don't have time to look that up today, because you'd have to go back in meeting minutes. So rather than going over it now, just bring it back to our next committee of the whole. I'll bring it up with the executive secretary exactly when I'm up there.
Okay. That's going?
I know exactly the report you're referring to, deputy warden, and we'll see that it's on the agenda.
Was there any further business to council?
Most adjourned.
Thank you.